Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have five members present. In addition to Dr. Hairston and Ms. Hilliard, we have Mrs. Johnson and Dr. Luckett on the phone. Mr. Figgers and Mrs. Thompson are on their way, so they'll be joining us momentarily. So therefore, we have a quorum. So we've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Actually, if you could just take a quick look at it, there's been a couple of... There's been nothing added and nothing removed. The order is a little bit different from the order that was in our prep materials. Largely, I requested that we move the discussion of the lease with Heinz County out of the consent agenda and into the information action items. So that's the primary change you'll see. And you'll see that it's paired with the Henley Young discussion, so as two different action items.
Could you name those items for me, Dr.?
Yes, so what you'll see now is the request to approve the amended agreement with the Henley Young Juvenile Justice Center is now item F. And you'll see that approval of the lease and forced product sale between board, that's now item G.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Sure thing.
I move, we accept the agenda as presented.
I second.
Dr. Hairston has moved and Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the motion carries. Do we have any public comment this evening? No public comment, great. Just reminder that any community members who would like to make public comments should email their requests to Ms. Rosalyn Williams at roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us. No later than 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting or appear in person in the boardroom, no later than 5:15 PM. Board members, typically, we would have a superintendent's report. We don't have one on the agenda, though I did ask Dr. Green just to provide some comments on what's going on with the water issues in the city and how that's affecting our scholars and how we're responding. So Dr. Green, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Sevak. Board members, Team JPS, all those who may be tuning in, just want to begin with a huge thanks and great appreciation for our operations team to include facilities and operations, all of our custodial team, our campus enforcement, child nutrition, all of those who have helped us to try and assess our situation with regard to our facilities and working in conjunction with the city and their water engineers and those, and helping to inform decisions that we've made to date. Also, just a huge thanks to our school leaders and academic leadership team and others who have helped us to arrive at various decision points along the way. And then, of course, to our scholars and parents for patience and understanding as we've tried to react and respond to the information that we've shared. So thankfully, it seems that the threat of flood and the eventual flood experience that we've had this year is, or this time, was not as bad as originally anticipated, but we certainly, our hearts and our thoughts are with those who have had to be displaced and had to deal with some of the implications and the harm of the flood. And as well, I think most everyone knows at this point that our city, we've continued to have challenges with our water treatment plants and challenges not only with the bore water notice, but also the low water or no water pressure in our schools and in our communities. And unfortunately, we found out today that that's likely going to get worse before it gets better, and so we have just announced that we will be switching all of our schools to virtual instruction for tomorrow, that's Tuesday, the August 30th. And we will continue to monitor and strive to make decisions in timely fashion and based on the available information from our city partners. Please understand to all Team JPS and all members of the JPS community, this information is not always readily available. It's ever-evolving, and so what we think is the case often shifts from hour to hour as we continue to talk with our partners in the city and as we continue to observe and to monitor our water pressure from school to school, neighborhood to neighborhood. It is a very volatile situation and not one that is easily, that we can easily get our arms around. So just want to stress that. I know that it's got to be difficult for families trying to plan, it's difficult for us trying to plan school leadership, school operations, and we're doing our very best to remain in communication and get information as quickly as possible, and we've stressed that with our partners at the city. It's vitally important that we get information as quickly as possible so that we can turn that around and make informed decisions. So know that that's our effort as well, and we'll try to give you as much notice as we can, and try to keep our scholars in school as much as possible. But just as we experienced today, what we thought was the case quickly changed and by, after we had started school this morning, realized that we needed to send some of our scholars back home. So we, again, just apologize for the inconvenience and just need folks to know that we're striving to make decisions as early as possible and to do our very best to have our scholars in schools safely as much as possible. So just wanted to share that, underscore that. Thank you, Dr. Sevak, for the opportunity to speak to that. We do hope that folks will just hang in there. Please do continue to be dialed in, watching our social media, our website. We're also, obviously, in communication with the news media to try and get all the information out there as quickly as possible and as accurately as possible. So thank you again for your understanding and your continued patience as we work through these challenges.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Appreciate the update, and thank you to all the team members, both here and out in the schools, who are just working to just keep our scholars safe and engaged. With that, board members, we'll move into our information action items. The first one up is Mr. Jones, our athletic director, executive director of athletics, has the request to approve the agreement between Jackson State University and the Jackson Public School District for the use of the stadium. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, School Board, Dr. Sevak, Dr. Green, and all team members present. I would like to present to the Board this evening for approval, facilities use agreement between Jackson State University and the Jackson Public School District to play two football games there on September 3rd, one at 11 o'clock and the other immediately afterwards. We had this activity last year, and the contract is pretty much the same, with the exception of the fee is gone from $8,000 last year to $10,000 this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. Board members, are there any questions? I had the opportunity to go last year. It was a great, I went to only one of the games, but anyways, it was a great experience. I thought it was a smart use of facilities from our partner, and so just thanks for bringing it back before us.
Yes, ma'am.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Dr. Hairston has moved, Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next, we'll invite Dr. Merritt to share the request to approve MOU with Heinz County Human Resource Agency and the Jackson Public School District.
All right. Excuse me. To Dr. Sevak, Board of Trustees, Dr. Green, the administration is recommending approval of memorandum of understanding between Jackson Public School District and Heinz County Human Resource Agency to locate and duly enroll seven pre-kindergarten classrooms at Van Winkle Elementary. As you are familiar with this, MOU does encompass some other things and services for our students. Dr. Sevak did ask, there are a total of 19 classrooms, pre-K classrooms at Van Winkle, so out of the 19, four will be maintained by Heinz County Human Resource Agency, and three will be absorbed by the collaborative that we, through the grant that we received this year. So the district will actually fund 12 of those classes, and so I hope that provides the insight that you all need. Any questions? And I do have Ms. Barnes, the principal of Van Winkle, is here with us as well.
What, excuse me, Dr. Merritt, what was the total amount of classrooms you said we'd have?
So the district will maintain 12, will fund 12.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
And are the Heinz County teachers and JPS teachers trained together?
So they're all our teachers.
Oh, great, okay.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you, that answered, question answered.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Dr. Hairston, and Ms. Barnes, thank you for being with us tonight. Is there a motion to approve this request?
Some move.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved, Mr. Figgers has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve the Legacy Scholars Grant Agreement, and we'll just take these next two together, Attorney Moore.
All right. Good evening, Board President, Dr. Sevak, Board Members, Dr. Green. The Office of the General Counsel recommends that the Jackson Public School District's Board of Trustees approve the grant agreements between Equal Justice Initiative and Jackson Public School District on behalf of the JPS Tugalu Early College High School and Forest Hill High School. Those, the grant is for, respectively, for each school, for J-Texas for $3,525, for Forest Hill is for $2,160. And again, this grant is to cover the costs for our scholars to attend the Legacy Museum from enslavement to mass incarceration and the National Memorial for Peace and Justice, which is in Montgomery, Alabama.
Thank you, Attorney Moore. Board members, any questions?
It's a wonderful opportunity, I'm excited, good job.
Thank you. Any, if there's no questions, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved, Mr. Figgers has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you, Attorney Moore.
I'll be bringing one more to y'all next week, by the way, they're still rolling in.
I think you can bring as many of these as you want, and you'll be getting them through.
F.O.S.
All right, well, next, we'll invite Ms. Marshall Thomas to the podium for the request to approve the annual dropout prevention and restructuring plan.
Good evening, Dr. Sevak, Board Members, Dr. Green. The administration presents for approval the district's annual dropout prevention plan and restructuring plans for the 2022-2023 school year. State law requires each school district to develop and implement an annual dropout prevention plan, and each high school with a graduation rate below 85% to create a restructuring plan. The plans must be approved by the district's local school board and posted on the district's website homepage by September 1st, 2022. The policy in state law requires that each district's dropout prevention plan include, at a minimum, strategies for reducing the retention rates in grades kindergarten, first and second, targeting subgroups that need additional assistance to meet graduation requirements, developing dropout recovery initiatives that focus on students that are aged 17 through 21, and addressing how students transition from the juvenile detention centers to their home school district. So the overarching goal of the district's dropout prevention plan is to identify students in need of assistance as early as kindergarten to reach graduation so that appropriate interventions can be provided to assist them with achieving the goal of exiting high school ready as well as college and career ready. So just a few notable revisions to this year's DPP. State law requires that the high schools with graduation rate less than 85% will have the restructuring plans. As a result, we only have three high schools this year, that's Lanier, Provin, and Wingfield, with restructuring plans included in this year's DPP, which is a decrease from six high schools last year. Lanier, Provin, and Wingfield updated and revised their restructuring plans based on our 2021-2022 data, but I would like to note that when we see the graduation rates for these three schools, you're going to be pleasantly surprised that the strategies that were written in this year's DPP were quite effective. K-2 retention rates increased from 4.8% to 5.5%, and as a result of that, additional strategies were included to address the increase, such as hosting monthly parent literacy academies, the awarding of an early learning collaborative grant to administer, implement, monitor, and evaluate our pre-K program to improve the quality of educational experiences offered to our four-year-old scholars, and extend developmentally appropriate educational programs and services. Increased professional development activities for our K-2 teachers, the addition of district-wide assessments in grades K through 2 to monitor progress, and direct instructions were all strategies that we included in this year's DPP. The district demonstrated improvement in the goals we listed last year, so as a result, a lot of the strategies that we included last year were also carried over because those proved to be quite effective. And that concludes the presentation for our dropout prevention plan for 2022-23. You have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas. Board members, any questions? Just one comment, that document is really rich with data and a lot of good trends that are in it, but it's pretty much, I was not surprised, shouldn't be, we've looked at them the past few years, but it was reminded just how much is in there that answers a lot of the questions that we ask. So thanks for all the work that went into it.
Thank you.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Dr. Hairston has moved, Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve the agreement, the amended agreement between the Henley Young Juvenile Detention Center and Jackson Public School District, Ms. Marshall Thomas.
The administration recommends approval of the revised memorandum of agreement between Jackson Public Schools and the Heinz County Board of Supervisors for the Henley Young Juvenile Justice Center. The district will provide educational services to include the required 330 instructional minutes as determined by the Mississippi Department of Education for students during the fiscal year of 2022-2023 to out-eligible and qualified children and youth involved in the Henley Young Padre Youth Detention Center by revising the current MOU to include the provision of adequate supervision and management in each classroom. So the revision to the MOU can be found in Section 3F where it states, "The contractor shall assist with providing classroom management, including the removal of disruptive students from the classroom when necessary. The contractor will provide a youth care professional or other appointed staff in each classroom for management and supervision." And that's the portion that was revised and added to the MOU.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas. Board members, in our last meeting, when we took up the question around the lease that we'll be talking about next, it provided an opportunity to look at our existing agreement with the Henley Young Center, provided also an opportunity, and it just aligned with school visits, so myself, Dr. Green, and Ms. Marshall Thomas, and Ms. Donald went and visited Henley Young. One of the things that became apparent is that we haven't always had the staffing, and I think, is it fair to say on both sides, or how would you characterize the staffing?
Well, we've always had the staffing that's required. If we had the additional support staff, we would have brought in additional staff, but you know, after the meeting, we both aligned on the additional staff that's needed on both ends.
Okay, thank you for that. So the youth care provider is staffing from the facility that is needed to make sure class can go on. Prior to our, our prior agreement actually had, was silent on this requirement. It matters. One of the things that became apparent, we've got strong leadership down there, Mr. Caldwell is the principal, and one of the things that became apparent is that for many of our students there, from the time they get in there till the time they reach their sentencing, the schooling offers an opportunity, you know, not just to get educated, but to show, to demonstrate to the judge about, you know, being engaged in school, and the extent that we don't provide that opportunity because there aren't youth care professionals from the detention center side, it's, it could dramatically affect the outcomes for the students. And so I want to commend you, Ms. Marshall Thomas, for working on this agreement. My understanding is the county has approved this?
That is correct.
Okay, so the county has made this change since we've been down there. So again, just appreciate the time and effort that went into that, and again, in service to the students. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'm glad to see this revision, and I have not visited Henley Young in years, and I would very much like to visit and be updated on the facility and what's going on. So next time you go, or if you just want to spend a few hours showing me, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
It was, it was, it was an impactful visit, both from, you know, just being in the facility, but also seeing the care, the determination of our team that is going into, you know, being involved in those students' lives, so.
Yeah, it's very important work, and we could really do a lot to help change our young adults' lives, just by not giving up on them and saying, "We're here," you know, to help you.
And that's exactly what I heard from our team. So, all right, is there a motion to approve?
I some move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Dr. Hairston has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve the lease on the forest product sale between the Board of Supervisors of Heinz County and the Jackson Public School District. Mr. Burke will present this information. We also have Mr. Gayler from, who's representing Heinz County here, available for any questions as well.
Good afternoon, President Sevak, Board Members, Dr. Green. The administration requests the Board of Trustees to approve the lease and forest product sale with the Heinz County Board of Supervisors. This request will allow Heinz County to build a new jail on their 35 acres site next to the youth detention center. This is a 40-year lease, and it is set to reappraise every eight years. Just additional information, Heinz County, in their consideration of this site, reviewed various sites, but this site was chosen and decided to be the best based on its availability and proximity to the Heinz County Circuit Chancery Courthouse, Circuit and Chancery Courthouses, and the current Henley Young Youth Detention Center. This will allow the county to save taxpayers' dollars between facilities and create a better economy of scale regarding the sheriff department's labor force. Additionally, the new facility will also have better accommodations for the mental health, mentally ill, which include a very large population in Jackson. Raymond does not, the facility at Raymond presently does not have a modern fire suppression system. I think this was brought out by Attorney Gayler in his last set of comments. Heinz County has to contract with other detention centers in other counties to deal with overcrowding. It is absolutely imperative that this new facility be built based on, that is the assertion of the Heinz County Board of Supervisors. The distance between Raymond and the Heinz County courthouse increases the potential for transportation incidents in which detainees attack drivers and each other. The new facility will greatly reduce the potential for these types of incidents to occur. Sheriff Tyree Jones and the administration have made detention center a priority, so as to concerns about how this facility will be run or operated differently than the facility in the past, they're asserting that because it's a priority, because it'll be a newer facility, they will, they will do things differently than they have, be afforded the opportunity to do things differently than they had in the past. The new, more modern facility with its, with working technology, modern fire suppression systems, the mental health accommodations and medical unit will allow the facility to be run in a much better way than the antiquated facility that already exists in Raymond. To the concerns related to the incarceration and the wait times, the response from, when this, when they were asked this question, the response was, they will, this will afford them opportunities for reprogramming, or opportunities for better programming in the facility. The new synergies between the youth detention center and the new facility that will be built and constructed should offer more opportunities for educational programming, so that gets to the heart of possibly expanding educational opportunities at the Henley Young facility. Heinz County welcomes the opportunity to assist JPS in this effort. And then the ongoing role, there was a question about the ongoing role of JPS in this facility. Heinz County, in response, Heinz County is open to ideas offered by JPS to improve its educational program offering and bring a closer relationship between the youth detention center and hopefully allow for better possibilities. So that is the recommendation, those are the responses to the questions that were asked, and I'll entertain any other questions, or Attorney Gayler is here to add any color to those remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, any questions, comments?
Dr. Sevak, I'm not quite even sure what my question is, but I am, I think generally in favor of this, particularly as our Heinz County supervisors are asking for this partnership and this help. And I guess I'm most concerned about the possibilities for programming and the relationship that this will have to our Henley Young facility. That could, could be a good thing, but we really have to carefully construct it and have good ideas and funds to back it up, and good people who are willing to do this very hard work, because we don't want our young folk in Henley Young to think, "Well, the next automatic step is, is to, you know, the prison." So I'm just concerned when we talk about programming, that we really think about high-quality program, the cost of it, who's going to bear the costs, how the entities will cooperate to make sure everything we do and serve these folk reflects, you know, the spirit of the Jackson Public School District on how we treat all people. So I just appreciate our partnerships that we're building that are important to all of us in the community.
President Sevak, this is Robbie. I appreciate the responses to the questions that I had from the county. I just want to say that I am still kind of, I am deeply concerned about the prospect of building a prison on 16th section property that's meant for the benefit of our schools. And the idea that for the next 40 years, we're going to profit from a prison on our property that will undoubtedly hold at some point children from our own district. And I realize that our sheriff, folks, turn the page, I realize the county needs it, I realize that it's a good thing in terms of logistics for the county, it's a good thing financially for our school district, but I've just got to admit, I am bothered by it, and I am opposed to it. And I think that's just kind of where I stand.
Thank you, Dr. Luckett.
I have one more question related to the, related to the products, forest product sale.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this a one-time cutting down trees and selling that?
Yes, ma'am, because the cruise was for the timber that would be removed to build the facility, so that, once the facility's placed there, there would be no room for that timber.
Now, is JPS going to receive any of, half of that?
The county's actually paying, they're going to write us a check for that.
We get all of it.
All of it.
Oh, very good, thank you, okay, well, excuse me, Robbie, I shouldn't be that happy.
There may be some minimal fees sometimes that we have to pay to the forestry.
Forestry, yes.
Because they provide the, the administration of the cutting and selecting the trees and all of that, they have that general jurisdiction when it comes to cutting timber on 16th section property. So there may be some minor fees. So there may be some minor fees that we have to pay to the forestry commission, but other than that, all the money will go to JPS.
Exactly. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I still move.
Second. The motion has been made by Ms. Hilliard, uh, has been seconded by Sevak. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Four to three. In favor, Sevak, Hilliard, Johnson, and Harrison. Opposed, Luckett, Figures, Thompson. Thank you, Mr. Burke. Next, we will move on to the request to approve the agreement between Sanders Quality Testing and the Jackson Public School District. Uh, Mr. Burke, you have this one as well?
Yes, sir. The administration is requesting a review and approval of the consulting services agreement between the Jackson Public School District and Sanders Quality Testing to administer tests for certification for, for bus drivers. This con- uh, contract will run from September 6th, 2022 to June 30th of 2024. Sanders Quality Testing administers tests as necessary to drivers so they can obtain their certification to be bus drivers for Jackson Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Figures has moved, Dr. Harrison is second, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Uh, Mr. Burke, you have the next one as well, which is the request to approve the amendment between Tyler Technologies Transportation Bus Fleet in the Jackson Public School District?
Yes, sir. The administration requ- uh, recommends approval of the purchase of 240, uh, GO9 tracking devices from Tyler Technologies. These devices allow for the location and route tracking of our JPSD buses so that support or assistance can be provided in the event of an accident, breakdown, or other issues. Uh, currently, the Transportation Department has 240 of these, uh, GPS tracking devices that will not be able to track effectively as of July 1, 2022 due to their becoming obsolete. Uh, thus, this purchase, uh, will assist in monitoring our fleet, uh, moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, are there any questions? Comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I still move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Dr. Harrison is second, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Okay, board members, we are on to our consent agenda items for finance. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously and had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items for finance?
I still move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Dr. Harrison is second, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Uh, next, uh, we have the consent agenda items general. Uh, all the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously and had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda general?
Dr. Sevak?
Yes.
I apologize to my colleagues. I, I wanted to ask, um, Dr. Burke a question about some of the paperwork regarding the bus fleet. It seemed, it, it seemed like there was some old information in there from 2016 and, and it had out-of-date signatures. Was that just to give us background information?
Yes.
Was that, yes, that is Tyler Technologies agreement.
Thank you.
Just because it was, it was kind of hard to follow when they were referring to prior agreements, so I think it's been the practice that when an agreement is an amendment or renewal, we provide you an old agreement, just in case you want to go back and read the formal brief.
That's kind of what I thought, but I said, "Might, might as well ask."
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Sevak.
Sure thing. All right, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items for general?
Some move. Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved, Ms. Hilliard is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the consent agenda items for personnel. Um, all of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously and had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for personnel?
Some move. Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved, Ms. Hilliard is second, and all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, board members. I don't believe there is an executive session tonight. Um, there will be one in the next meeting, I believe. Okay, uh, so with that, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I still move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Mrs. Thompson is second, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, board members.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Aye.